Good evening, I want to call this meeting of the North End of School Committee to order for February 6, 2020. Our first order business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome again. Would people please silence their mobile devices if they could? Our first order business tonight is public comment. Anyone in the audience want to come forth and give public comment tonight? You will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well, if you'd like to, if you want to hold off and wait until the end. Okay, hearing none. We have nothing on the recognition agenda tonight. Dr. Gilligan, is that correct? Okay, consent agenda, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes from January 16, 2020, they're in our packet. Could I have a motion to accept them?
So I'll move to approve the minutes from January 16, 2020, as presented in the packet.
Do I have a sec? Okay, motion by Mr. McDebitz, second by Ms. Mably, any discussion, any edits, changes?
I see one mistake. In the public comment, the last speaker, Alisa Goldberg, her name is spelled wrong. First name, right.
Oh yeah, it is. It is not Alisa, it is Elisa. Okay, I'm sure Ms. Gary can make that change.
Very easily.
Very easily. Any other edits, comments, questions? Okay, we'll make that change. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And who say no? No, no, so 5-0 vote on that. Okay, our student report, who was here tonight, Eamon? How are you tonight? Good, thank you, thanks for asking.
So it's been three weeks since we've met. So, for the sake of conciseness, because it seems like you've got a big agenda tonight, I'm just going to go through the most important things that I think have happened over the past three weeks. So, last week was Nights Care Week, which has been an initiative Student Council has been doing throughout the year, and it's meant to generate school spirit and more participation, involvement, and just a general atmosphere of loving North End of our high school. So there was a day for service, a day for the environment, a day for extracurriculars, et cetera, and really just meant to create a positive atmosphere at the school. On the note of service and environment, the Race Amity Club held a fundraiser last week and this week to raise money to help plant trees as part of the Great Green Wall Project, which I touched on three weeks ago. And the Environmental Club held a bake sale in order to provide proceeds to help rehabilitate the animals that have been displaced by the wildfires in Australia. In addition to service, the National Honor Society recently had its blood drive in order to help give students a feeling of service and involvement while also doing good for society. National Honor Society applications also went out two weeks ago, and they were due this Super Bowl Sunday. And they were given to all juniors with GPA above 3.8, and they will hear back from the selection committee as to whether they were accepted by February break. The High School Drama Guild is putting on Footloose this weekend. Tomorrow at 7:00, Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00, and Sunday, so if you're interested, you should go see it. Tickets are sold at the door as well. The robotics competition at the high school was held on the 25th of January, and one of our teams was able to win the competition outright, and they advanced to the New England Regional Competition. And if they're able to win that, which hopefully they will, then they will go on to the World's Competition, which is in Louisville, Kentucky, in April. The Spanish exchange trip will be taking place over the week of February vacation, and the week following that, and I know many of our seniors are eagerly looking forward to that, so that'll be exciting for them, because they already had their exchange students come over last fall. I'm sure Jack, you remember Jack telling you all about that. And also, there's been a lot of flu, cold illnesses passing around the schools, so just, you know, a word of note, be careful, you know, especially those of you with young children.
Thank you, appreciate it. Got a couple down already though.
And last, I have a question for you guys. We, during the less busy weeks, tend to use the sports as more of a filler content. Do you guys find that helpful at all? Because Jack, Mika, and I all agree that it's kind of drones on sometimes.
I like to hear some of it.
It's fun to hear it. That information is pretty readily available, like in the newspaper and stuff like that, but it's more fun to hear it from you.
Maybe jazz it up a little bit. You know?
But some of these other things, if you didn't tell us, we wouldn't know. So if you felt like you were crushed for time, or, you know, somebody couldn't do something, you know, like I said, sports is pretty well covered by the Tribune and other outlets, but the rest of the stuff is not. They're more fun to listen to.
We appreciate that.
That is all I have, any general questions?
I have nothing from the board.
All right. Great report as always.
Thank you.
Tell your companions, say hello. This actually may be a good segue to take something out of order. Eamon just mentioned it. If there's no objection, I'd like to take out a new business, 11B. The first reading and request is to suspend the rules to approve the exchange trip to Spain, is that okay? It's on the table right now, so might as well, might as well come and address it now. I think Principal Jackson is here, and if you can introduce your other folks, maybe good?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. I'm Chuck Jackson, principal of high school. To my right, Spanish teacher Meredith Pryor. To my left, French and Spanish teacher Chris Carroll and department coordinator for world language, Chris Carroll. Thank you guys first for having us, and we really appreciate you guys suspending the rules to hear us on a mistake on a form that we made at the high school in my principal's office, that we didn't get a form in in time, so that we could go through this process in a timely manner. So, I know we wanted to have Meredith available, and I really appreciate Chris coming out too, if you guys have any questions on the trip. But it's something, we have a mechanism in place to make sure we have that form in, in advance, maybe even in the spring ahead of time as well, so, thank you guys.
Well, I don't, did you put Eamon up for that? I mean, Eamon just kind of teed that up perfectly for you.
No! I don't know if you could tell that about him, but Eamon's a natural.
He's a little sharp. So obviously, I mean, I'll just express a little bit of our frustration. You know, we approve these trips pretty regularly. We try to make an effort over the last couple of years to get this under control and get the information out to people, because people have a lot of questions about these trips. And this is obviously a very important trip, you guys have done it in the past. Going out of the country is something we don't take lightly, and, you know, having the notices is obviously important. But at the same time, this is happening in, you know, 10 days, so we're kind of got our hands tied, so to speak. But, you know, before we get into suspension of the rules and questions about this, well, that's what I want to do. Are there any questions from the members, people want to start?
When did we start enlisting students to do the trip? Like when did they start making payments?
Oh, making plans?
Payments and plans.
They start making payments in the summer.
In the summer, okay.
I actually thought that you must have, like, obviously a year ago, because I know a ton of the seniors who are very stoked about the trip and who hosted kids already. So, I would like to see, and you said you have mechanisms in place, but maybe we need to look at the process, or you need to look at yours. We fixed ours a little bit, but look at the process first, or going forward to catch some of this stuff. I mean, this is a trip that you're about to say has been going on for years, it's nothing new, it's nothing different. But obviously something fell apart, so I think we need to look at the process. I thought the problem was going to be that you were being told you can't go because there was a coronavirus or something. So that was what I was worried about at first, so.
I think this is something that the school committee and central office and this high school has been keenly aware and something we're focused more on in the past couple of years about getting folks here. And I think last, just at the end of school, last school year, we even updated the forms again in moving forward, and I think one of the things we've seen this year is coming forward with, you know, trips that are pretty far out now. And simply put, I think this has been going on a long time, and if we could go back and make that change, I think we would. But I also think that talking with Ms. Marks and Mr. Jackson, that there's ways to ensure going forward that we don't miss something like this.
How did it get missed?
Honestly, I have eight million things to do for the trip, and this is something that I truly just forgot to do. I planned the whole thing, and it's just, it's kind of a lot. So this was just usually on my list in December, and I completely overlooked it.
Yeah, and even typically from our office, my principal's office, and my assistant to go through and make sure we have the trips and mechanisms to have those reminders in place too. It's a lot on our teachers as they kind of go through and plan and coordinate these things, especially the ones out of country where, you know, I think we, as I said, we're going to have some things in place to make sure we have that information ahead, so. Not even to put it on the people submitting the trips, it's more on our office too.
Before the trip is offered to students, it's approved by the principal, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so it does seem like there's a mechanism where you can have some sort of a checklist where the principal can make sure that the next step happens. So I appreciate knowing how the process works and what your plans are. One thing, our form always asks what the terms of refund, if there's a reason that the trip gets canceled. And this is set by company, that's not super helpful to me. It would be helpful to me to know, you know, more or less, like, you know, if they cancel with, you know, reason or whatever it is, it would be helpful to know. But I know the companies do set it, but if you could just, you know, repeat that information for us, so that we don't have to then research with the company.
Are you at all uncomfortable with the terms of the company? Because I know for a fact we've had to cancel several times because of terrorism in Paris and other things with this company, and they have absolutely no qualms. If a kid can't go for whatever reason, or your school has decided that you just aren't taking kids because there's been a terrorist attack, they have fully refunded everything for the last 10 years.
Thanks, good to see you, that's helpful.
And that's just, you know, that information is helpful to have in there.
But no refund but on suspendables, right?
Excuse me?
No refund but on suspendables, correct?
Affirmative.
Just for the dedication of the public who are here, we always have two readings about everything we do here. We take it seriously to give people public notice. And again, we've done this trip in the past, so I think we're inclined to do it, but we definitely have a better policy of not doing it, so. Any further questions?
At that, if there's other questions, could I have a motion to first suspend the rule so we can take this up and approve it tonight, please? Motion made by Ms. Lynch, second by Ms. Mably, any further, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's 5-0. And then, could I have a motion to approve the trip as presented in the packet, please?
I'll approve the trip as presented in the packet.
Aye, second.
Motion made by Ms. Lynch, second by Ms. Mably, to approve the packet as, approve the trip as presented in the packet. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so 5-0. Great, have a great time, congratulations, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say that I'm really appreciative of the efforts, A, of the folks that run these trips for our kids, I think they're life-changing and pretty amazing work and many years of some really great stuff and experiences for kids. And I'm looking forward to continuing to approve our trips that are a year out with our new system, and we'll continue to work on that. And I just appreciate the work of the teachers, the department heads, and we'll make sure we get it to the place on time.
Sure. I think one of the main reasons why we, or at least I, would like to see it earlier is because it allows students to work toward being able to afford it. And, you know, some kids can't just get a trip and find out about it unless, they need to know, like, I have this opportunity coming down the road and work toward it. So I think that's one of the main reasons why earlier is better for some kids who want to be able to try to aspire to that opportunity.
For those who might be paying attention at home, I was projecting the UN trip rather than the Spanish trip when you guys were discussing it.
Do you want to just stand for the trips, might as well? Why don't we just stay on the trips while we're here talking about this? So the first reading of the Model UN Overnight Trip to Boston. Dr. Gilligan, is there someone to talk about this, or are we just going to?
Ms. Marks, do you have any comments? Pretty straightforward.
It's a trip that's planned before, it's going to be over a weekend, so the students will leave partway through the day on Friday, March 20th. They'll return on the 22nd, it's about 14 students, they're going to Boston. So they, part of the activity is writing papers, defending arguments, performing research around a variety of situations. There are no classes that need to be covered, there is a fee. They are made aware of the funding, the scholarship funding that's available through LILIF. Shepherds are funded through student cost.
Does the cost, which is $300, does that include the lodging as well as any conference admission fees?
I believe so.
Okay.
And how do kids get chosen? Do they sign up, or do they do some kind of work to then get the opportunity?
That I am not certain of. I can certainly find out before the second reading how they're chosen, if you'd like me to.
It'd be, just to know if anybody who was interested can do it, or they have to do something?
Yeah.
Is it just the club?
Yeah.
But I don't know how many students are in there, and if they all go, or I don't know that far.
Okay.
Apparently is.
And it's one we've obviously done in the past, so this is obviously the first reading, and maybe you can get that information for our next meeting on the 27th. Okay, so thank you, Ms. Marks. Next order of business, we're going to go back to superintendent's report, Dr. Gilligan?
Two updates tonight, first and foremost. Wanted to introduce the team that's here tonight, I'm really, I couldn't be more proud of all of our principals in attendance, some of our coordinators and directors from humanities and STEM and nursing and SEL, along with all these principals. The work that they did on the budget and updating the strategic plan based on entry, based on a lot of committee work, based on tons of feedback, is just, I couldn't be blessed with not only a better team here in central office, but a team that's out on the front lines advocating and always doing what's best for kids. And I'm so proud of them and the work they've done on the budget, and I'm thrilled that they're here tonight, because I also know that they are excited about the school committee support of the budget and this process moving forward. So, just a welcome to them, and I'm thrilled they're here. And then secondly, I have an update on Crest Collaborative. As you can see on the agenda, it's a required notification as it relates to facility acquisition. And Crest, many of you know for many years, has been on Broadway in Methuen. I always think it's Salem, New Hampshire, but it's actually still in Methuen. And they've been working on the sale of that, and that's scheduled for February 21st of 2020. And they're in the process of taking up new space at 20 Shattuck Road in Andover. And this is a notification in terms of what they need to do, they're not eligible for MSBA funding, but they have to follow all the procedures, laws, et cetera, with the collaboratives here in the Commonwealth. And they do not anticipate any increase of tuition charges due to this project as they move or look to move to this new property. And I'd like to ask that someone on the board at Crest, Helen Picard, if she had any further questions, comments?
Yeah, I would just say that Crest is currently located on Broadway in Methuen as well as Branch Street in Methuen. So they have been actively for a few years looking to move someplace where they can consolidate all their programs in one space, and that will allow them to expand their programming to meet the demands of member districts in meeting the needs of kids. So, there's not a lot of spaces that really can reasonably do that. So this is an exciting space, we've had a couple spaces that we've looked at. This is the farthest we've gotten, and the big legal requirement here is that you be aware that Crest is looking to have a mortgage for the purchase. So if the mortgage, if they can't work out the financing, the purchase won't take place, but they need to notify you that they're putting out for mortgages. And they've contacted, I can't remember, it's three or four banks, and before the mortgage can be approved, there'll be a vote of the board. So we're meeting next week on the 11th of February at the Shattuck Road, and you all are invited to come to see the facility. I have not been, a number of board members have been over to the Andover site. And it's very, it's very important that it be centrally located so that districts can get there well. So this is really an exciting possibility, but it's been, you know, it's been probably four years in the making trying to find the right spot.
I don't know if you know this, Helen, you know, they're going to take out a mortgage to buy these properties, are you sure?
Yes.
Who's responsible if there's any kind of default late payment? Do we have any responsibility or accountability?
Yes.
We do.
That's why you have somebody on the door.
I know. I know, I know that.
So, so the financing would include the sale of the Broadway property?
Which I'm sure is worth a lot of money, yes.
As well as, we lease the property on Branch Street. So there would be either a sublet, or there would be some loss in that. So that's, that's all been worked out in the budgeting for.
Is that proportional, like if there was some kind of default as far as the four?
Yeah, it would be split between all the member districts.
But split four ways, or split by? But split four ways or split by use? I mean, that's what I'm trying to, I don't know if, you may not answer this question, yeah.
It's, it's by district, I think.
Yeah, so I, I could get some more clarification, but what, for example, when we join SEEM, we do join, um, when we join SEEM, we, we look to belong to collaboratives that do well, and, um, that's part of the process of bringing SEEM and their, their numbers forward last year when they were approved, and we had to interview to get in, uh, because they also want to bring the right districts in too, so that they're not overwhelmed, because there's a benefit to us, because we get the member rate versus, um, rate, uh, outside for services, um, but that, that piece comes with it, and I don't think they were anticipating any.
Well, and, and looking at the finances of the collaborative, you might remember that this year we've turned money back to the districts.
Yeah.
So, you know, so the, the finances of the collaborative are very strong. There's no reason to think that there's gonna be a default.
Yeah, God forbid, but, um, so you're not actually voting on, you're just getting a tour and there's a presentation, but you're not actually taking the vote at that time, too?
On the mortgage, I think we are.
Yeah.
It says there's a vote.
The vote on the most economical option at this meeting. I'm not sure what that means. The vote would vote on the most economic, okay. I probably have some other questions that, uh, that are just coming to me right now, but, um, any other questions regarding this, or no? Marks?
Like the, the lease, the, uh, to Branch Street, and, uh, I assume that they're looking to be timely to move over the summer months, so.
I'm sorry, I can't...
I said, I assume that they're looking to be timely to move over the summer months, is that the goal?
Yes.
Yep. And the sale of the Broadway property, I believe, is, um, scheduled for three million, about $3 million for the sale of the Methuen property, scheduled for a couple weeks out.
Thank you, Helen. Anything else, Dr. Gilligan?
Well, I'd be, uh, remiss if I didn't mention, uh, Patrick McGravy, uh, and his civic project, civics project over at the middle school, we've had state reps in. I know last week I saw, um...
Representative Vargas, I think.
I saw Representative Vargas, Andy Vargas from Hable, it was the first time I had met him, it was very nice to meet him.
He was a student, didn't he?
He, uh, I, I think Rep. Minakuchi said that, not me. Um, no, but he was young and he was inspiring, and he really related well with the kids, uh, and to hold a hearing on whether, you know, you could vote at age 17 or 16 within your town and talk about, you know, provide that testimony and have that go as part of a bill, uh, and then possibly bring that back to, um, town meeting, uh, as well. And I think, I don't have the results right in front of me, but I think it was pretty overwhelming, the students voted, uh, that they should be able to vote at 16, so. But I gotta say, it's just this ongoing civics piece, it's been a real push by the state, um, and Pat McGravy's really led the way in partnerships with Harvard, um, and, and over the years, uh, just other resources, and he does a really nice job bringing in all sorts of, all of our representatives. Um, yeah, I want to say, and, and Mr. Gonsoff is here, I'm not sure, is it Bruce Tar there tomorrow? Um, so, and we've had them all in, um, and we're, we're lucky that they make themselves available.
Absolutely. They invited us, um, middle, end of March or something like that, yeah.
They could send an email, but, uh, I have to say it a couple times, but it does, he does great.
Oh, it's great.
Well, I remember when Patrick was just a CIT at which state camp, that's all we are.
It's crazy. Um, anything else?
That is it.
Uh, just quickly on the chair's report, obviously this is budget season, um, and I want to thank my vice chair, I couldn't, I was out of town last Tuesday, but I know we're in front of the FinCom, so Helen, thank you for representing, well, I know, I know Dr. Millie and Dr. Gilligan, but you represented the school committee, so I wanted to thank you, I'm sorry, I'm s- Thank you. Um, I don't know if you want to say anything that, your interaction, I, I would normally say what the interaction with the FinCom was, but if you want to say a couple words about how that was.
Yeah, and they, they took a great interest, there were a lot of slides and a lot of information, a lot of it that we've heard here, um, and in, and in different ways. Um, I thought they were, um, very supportive and very interested in, um, not just this year, but moving forward, um, so I thought it was terrific.
My experience with them has been fantastic this year as well. They've been very engaged in, uh, you know, Sasha as their chair has been fantastic, we're dealing with, and, you know, since our last meeting on January 16th, um, I think, um, you know, we'll probably talk about that in a few minutes, but I want to thank the town manager specifically for, uh, recognizing the needs of our school system and stepping up to the plate and, uh, agreeing to our, um, our budget increase. So, I know the selectmen are gonna take that up on Monday, um, so I'm excited about that, so. That's why I have my chair's report right now, and I think that's a good segue into the old business of a vote on, to approve the FY 21 budget. Um, we're gonna take question, well, we'll, comments in a second, but just to put the motion on the floor, uh, Ms. Picard, do you have that in front of you?
I do. So I move that we approve as presented the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 21 budget in the amount of $52,992,923, representing an increase of 4.52% from the fiscal year 20 budget.
Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Really? Baby jumping a bit. Okay, uh, motion to approve, uh, and seconded, um, so discussion. Who wants to go first?
I'll just say that I think a tremendous amount of work has gone into this, it's very thoughtful. Um, appreciate all the public comment we've received on it as well, and I, I support it.
Uh, so again, I mean, I'll be supportive of the budget, you know, but I think the thing that we really need to start to explore and push is, um, you know, we're 316th in the state, uh, for per pupil spending, and I don't think that that represents, uh, what we think of as North Andover. Um, and so I would challenge all of us, you know, and the superintendent and, and FinCom and the board of selectmen, um, to figure out what our strategic plan is. We're not gonna get there overnight, um, but, you know, can we, what, what's our incremental progress gonna be on that, and not just to put money at it so that we drop from 316 to 275, but educationally for the benefit of the kids in this community, um, where are we going?
I agree that tremendous amount of work and appreciate everything that has been done. Um, I think it's, it's, what's particularly excellent is the five-year element to it as well. Um, and then, kind of similar to Mr. McDevitt, what I was particularly intrigued by was the fact that, and Dr. Gilligan, you mentioned this repeatedly, um, the whole purpose of the five-year plan is to, we have a, um, Facilities Master Plan 2 that needs to get going last week, um, and the only way to inform that is to have already done the work and thought ahead as to what the needs are gonna be, and, um, I, um, hope that we're gonna get going on the Facilities Master Plan 2 immediately, because when we looked at the, um, Anne Brad Street, we talked about Kittredge, um, Franklin, and, um, Atkinson needing some major work, and, um, it feels like that should have already gotten started, and I know we had a lot of changes in our town to, uh, cause that, and we had Columbia Gas and other things, but I think we have to get back to, we need a solid plan on that going, and I, I know that, I'm sure you're talking to the town manager about it, but I, I feel that is very anxious at this point to, to mesh with the budget going forward after this one.
I can tell you that we've already started, um, we've contacted principals and, and they're expecting the visits from the consultants that have been hired to do the initial building assessments, so it is starting.
So I'm really proud of this committee, um, for being willing to, um, really look at where we can make improvements. We've been at status quo for so long, um, and it was a little bit scary to step up beyond what the town manager was offering us, um, initially, because this town can be challenging. Um, but it was really important to me as a committee that we really look at what improvement would look like. Um, so I'm, I'm proud of that work that we did together, I'm pleased that the community came out and supported that, and of course tremendously, um, uh, appreciative of the town manager and Lynn Savage, um, looking at the numbers and looking at the possibilities and being able to meet us, um, at this place of improvement. We have a long way to go, we have a, we have a roadmap, we have a plan. Um, again, you know, thankful to, um, the school folks that put this together, um, those that are sitting out there that did, you know, a lot of the legwork, like, this doesn't happen, um, this doesn't happen without a lot of people's input, but, um, it's really important to me that we be, um, on an improvement process, and we just haven't looked at those things for a long time, so I'm really, um, thankful for that, and I'm excited to be able to support this budget.
Thank you, Helen. Um, I'd just say quickly, you know, we started this process, you know, back in August, um, we talked about this at our retreat, and I, I am really obviously thrilled and proud to serve with the four of you on this committee. This is the first time in my five budgets that we've done that we've kind of really stepped over and done, done more, and, uh, the work, uh, Dr. Gilligan, that you and Dr. Millie, and, um, your whole team, and thank you for being here tonight to support the budget and support your, uh, your leadership here, because, um, we, I think we've pushed them hard, um, and they've come back with answers upon answers. I am, um, really happy with the public participation we've had over the last four weeks, but even before that, I mean, there's a few people in the community that, you know, want us to do more, and we're gonna try to do more. I think we have got some buy-in from, on the town manager and, and some members of the board of selectmen, that this is a, not, this just not, this is not a one and done. We have a, a five-year plan in place that put a lot of people at the table. Lorene and Marcy, thank you so much for all your work on this. Um, really happy to, to, to see this happening, and just to, you know, not to be a Debbie Downer, but I, I do, I do share, um, Amy's sentiments on the facilities. I mean, we have some, some goals in year four and year five that are not gonna come fruition unless we get our facilities up, up to snuff, and, uh, I know we've talked about the, those three elementary schools in particular, um, those might change depending on what some of the consultants come back with, but, uh, it's definitely something that we are working hard on, no question about it, so I'm thrilled about it. Dr. Gilligan, do you want to add anything before we take a vote on this?
I would just say that, um, you know, like I said before, it couldn't be done without this team, and it's an amazing team, but more importantly, um, you know, studying the district for so long, getting input for so long, um, I think that part of being superintendent is recognizing, like, we do a ton of things really well in this community, and we have a ton to be proud of, but we also have other areas that we have to tackle, and I think trying to do so in a responsible, uh, way, uh, that's fiscably, uh, fis- fiscally doable over time. We didn't get here overnight, being in the bottom three percentile of spending, and I'm thrilled that we have a town manager that's, uh, working with us to move us forward, but we need to continue to tackle class size, we need to continue to look to expand offerings, uh, and ways to support students and staff, particularly around special education, EL, students who are economically disadvantaged, and more importantly, finding ways to challenge kids who excel academically, and it's all tied in to all the folks that are here tonight, whether it's humanities, STEM, nursing, SEL, principals, teachers, special education, and, um, to not only have a five-year staffing plan with other assumptions built in, but to have, uh, you know, a strategic plan that takes us out three years with real specific goals and where we want to be, um, I'm pretty excited about, and I think we have a bright future, I think there's a lot of work ahead, and I think the most important part of that five-year plan is that these positions that we've laid out drive the kind of spaces we need to create to continue to tackle the aforementioned, uh, issues and some of the challenges we have, um, because that will be critical going forward in terms of the middle school space now, middle school being in Facilities Master Plan 2 along with Atkinson, Franklin, and Kittredge, and I know there was a little bit of a delay, but we're pretty excited, uh, when, when I saw Jim scheduling times for folks to go out to the schools, uh, we're excited about it, and I would just say thank you to the community for all the support in terms of, we want to do the best job we can with what we have to educate our kids, um, taking a pre-K through 22 perspective in mind, and looking at that over time of how to best tackle it, and, um, looking forward to it. So, thank you, and thank you for the school committee for your support.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Sure, good.
So at our last meeting, Janice raised a bunch of questions, and I thought we were gonna come back with this meeting with the answers, I just wanted to note the status of that. Have those answers been?
Yeah, I was gonna address that one.
Okay.
Vote, vote. Um, just to remind people what we do every year is, and we did have a lot of participation this year, more than we usually do, um, we got questions through email, we got questions from public hearing, the finance committee had some questions, which we did, um, address during the presentation, but in the budget, um, backup links that we have on our website, um, there's a tab, what we, we do this every year, any questions that come in, we put the questions in the responses to those questions. So if you clicked on the budget questions and answers, um, you'd see this, and I won't go over them all, but they're all, all the questions that we received are here and all the responses.
Well, and, and you did present it at the FinCom, a lot of these questions, they actually added to the thing that we saw last time.
Correct. We, we gave them the presentation you got, but then we had slides for each of the questions they had given us in, in advance.
And I'd also thank the staff, uh, we had parents come in to ask some of the questions that night, and maybe they weren't expecting them to be posted, but we had some folks get to come in and, and meet with Jim, or Lorene, Kristen Ando, and connect, so.
I remember too, we had some questions about, um, nurse visits and increases in nurse visits, and, um, I know Cheryl Barzac is here, I didn't know if some of those answers were...
I look forward to that May and June presentation every single year.
Okay.
You're gonna spoil it? I don't want to put you in the spotlight, Cheryl. Um, if, if the committee would indulge me, because this is the last, um, order of business, um, on the agenda, and public comments right after it, so I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come up and, and speak to, I mean, uh, there's a lot of administrators and principals here tonight, uh, if anyone wants to take this opportunity to, to say a few words, I'll have you now, if you want.
Don't be shy, Mr. Cushing, um, could not make it tonight, he said he couldn't make it, and, uh, he's typically the...
He's working on a server for Minecraft, they had to cancel it again. Okay, seeing none. We have a motion on the table. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It's a five oh vote, fantastic, congratulations, everybody, thank you.
The lady in there already voted.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's quite obvious we don't hear, so.
No, we know. So now we have the real public comment. Nothing's standing, this is like three weeks in a row.
You guys are doing such a great job.
Yeah. Okay. Last call on public comment. All right, um, from the members, anything you want to add on non-budget stuff? I know we, we just spoke on the budget, but...
No, I mean, I think the only, uh, thing I would add is, uh, Emon mentioned, uh, Footloose is, uh, kicking off this weekend, and, uh, I'm excited for it, so.
You, Kristen?
No, no.
No? I think Sarah's out on Saturday, that could be me and the kids rocking it, Kevin Bacon style, I might have to dress up like, yeah, sure.
Seven degrees.
Absolutely. Six degrees. Um, anyone else, Ms. Lynch, or anyone?
Of course.
Of course.
Um, so we had the Health Advisory Committee, uh, meeting yesterday, again, a fantastic group of people working together in town, we're so lucky. Um, flu is rampant, it's not too late to get your flu shot, so please get it. Um, there's more flu in the community wide than there are in our schools, probably in part because our, um, nurses are so great at talking about hand washing, um, so we're, we're appreciative of that. Um, a lot of good news coming out of the high school and the 84 group, that's the group that's, um, 84% of students don't use tobacco products, um, and so they're encouraging all students to be part of the 84 group, so that's a, that's a student-led group that's really doing a lot of work, um, to address, um, tobacco use, vaping, um, all that jazz. So, um, you know, that's just really good stuff that's happening.
Thank you, Helen, if you have any?
I do have one thing to piggyback on, that's all right?
Absolutely.
Um, so my seventh grader did report that not, she was out for two days, sick the last two days as well, but she also reported that, not only by the nurses, but when she had PE, they reviewed during PE how important it is to wash your hands, because everybody's been so sick. So, the whole staff seems to have the message that we need to make sure our forgetful children wash their hands. Yeah.
Okay. Um, if there are no comments, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Lynch, second by Mr. McDevitt to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye. We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.